Alright, it's seven o'clock, I get all means of order, if I can help please rise and join us in the floor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ellie, would you call the roll? Here? Here. Here.
Eric Jones.
President.
Kristen Ren. The promise present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Jeff, are you excited?
Is there a motion to adopt? Move and settle. All in favor say aye. The agenda is adopted. Is there a motion to approve your consent agenda? A little call?
Katie, Miss Leo?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Fellow?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rochelle Perry?
Our next item named is Ford Spartan Awards. First we'll have the recognition of our young authors. So, as I call your name, if you would come forward. Start with Nora Hammonds. Nora here? There she is. Oh my goodness gracious. Let's stand in front of the desks, shall we, so that you can see Nora? Wow. You did such a big book here, I'm amazed. Can you tell people about what your story is about?
My story is about a leaf named Leo.
Uh huh. And what happens to Leo? He decides that he's gonna stay on the tree all winter, right? And what happens? What happens to his friends?
They fly off the tree.
They all fly off the tree. And he's all alone, all winter, right? And he misses his friends. But what does he get to see?
He gets to see Christmas lights and Christmas trees.
Yeah, and so he's happy about that, right? And so what happens the next year? After he tells all his friends about what he saw in the wintertime? And how he saw all the Christmas lights and the Christmas trees? And who did he meet, by the way?
He met Santa.
He met Santa. And then he told all his friends, right? When they came back in the springtime, his friends all came back. And he told them all about what it was like to be there in the wintertime and what he saw. Right? And then what did his friends do? They all stayed on the tree, all winter, right? So that they could see those things too. So, uh, she's really done a very beautiful job here. Nora's illustrated this book as well as written it. And, uh, what grade are you in? Are you in kindergarten?
First grad.
First grad. And who's your teacher? Mrs. Erickson? And are your mom and dad here with you? Can they stand up? Can we give them a round of applause? Yeah, I thought so. And they probably told you, "You should keep at it, huh? And keep writing." And I think you should do that, I think you should keep writing because you're very good. And so I have a special award for you here, if you could keep. And bring that home with you. And here's your book back. Very good job. Katherine Hofer? Hi Katherine, what grade are you in? And who's your teacher? Do you know, are your parents here with you?
Dad, yes.
Can they stand up? Can we give them a round of applause? And, uh, this is an interesting story. Did you come up with this all on your own, or is this something that you experienced?
I came up with this all on my own.
Okay. And can you tell, can you tell us what the story's about?
So it's about three girls moving to South Florida, um, and they're-
Three sisters, right?
Yeah, and their feelings changed throughout the story, how they're moving, um, how they feel about, how they feel about moving.
What did they first think?
They first, well, they first all have different expressions, like, the youngest one was crying a lot, and then the middle one was, uh, was trying not to cry, but she was disappointed, and the oldest one was thinking about her good friend in the new school.
Uh huh. And what happened right after they learned that they were gonna be moving, what happened next?
They, um, so they went to, um, they went out for ice cream, and then, um, they started asking a lot of questions about, like, what, about if they were going to be, like, moving by the beach, or if they, like, were going to, like, still have tradition, like, but, like, switch them up, like, Christmas on the beach.
Uh huh. And it turns out that they did move, or they were gonna move to the beach, right? So, right after they find out about moving, they fly out to see what their new neighborhood might be. Right?
Yeah.
And what did they find there?
They find, like, a neighborhood that they liked, uh, because, like, it has a lot of sidewalks, because they like to drive, and it has a lot of houses, which means a lot of new cars.
And then what did they do after they find a nice neighborhood to live in?
They, they go to the beach for a little bit, and, um, they don't wait to put their swimming suits on, they just, like, go in the waves and goes.
And, uh, and then they fly back home, and then what happens?
And then they tell their friends about it, and after some time, they seem sad that they're moving, because, like, uh, all of their, a lot of their kids behind, like, their friends in their front house.
So the girls who are happy about moving, and who like the idea that they're gonna be by the beach now, now they feel kinda sad again, right? And so what happens in the end?
So what happens in the end is when the neighbors, uh, came to the other side of the beach, they realized that home is anywhere somewhere.
Very good. Yeah, wonderful story. And I'll give you back your book, and then we have a special award for you too. Congratulations. Mikey Hammer? I wasn't sure, is it Mikey or Mickey? Okay. Before I give you these back, what grade are you in, Mikey? Fifth grade, and who's your teacher? And are your parents here? Let's have them stand up, they get around. They have to keep telling you to work on this, work on this, work on this? So tell us about your story.
So I wrote about a family who was moving to America on the Titanic, and then it, and then when it started sinking, they all had to get off and try to survive.
So they were, um, what you described as a wealthy family, right? So what was different about being a wealthy family when you were on the Titanic?
Well, we got the, um, first class, which was pretty nice, and, like, pretty nice. Instead of working third class, we were getting out of the house.
And where, what were the rooms like, and where were they?
Um, they were pretty big, and, um, most of them were first class, third was second class.
And who was in the second class and the third class?
Um, so, uh,
Yeah, and he didn't know they were there. And when did he find out?
Well, when it started sinking.
When the boat started sinking. And what happens to the family when the boat starts sinking? And what happens? What do they, what do the, what do they tell them when they're trying to get in the lifeboats? So the dad had to stay on board. And, uh, the rest of the family was crying, and dad was crying, and they were separated. And then what happens? They get in the lifeboat and they go into the water.
And then the dad jumps off, and the water sinks down.
Yeah, as the, as the ship is tilting upwards and sinking down, he jumps off the top. And what does the family think when he jumps?
They go down.
Yeah, because they weren't sure he was gonna make it, right? And he swims over to the lifeboat, and he gets in and he saves his life. So they're one of the lucky families that survived. Remember how many people survived? About 700 people, yeah. And they were one of the lucky ones. And, um, this, what did you do to research this, to make sure that everything was? Well, it was very good, it's a kind of historical-based story, it has historical facts, they're all, they're all good, and they've all been checked, so, we did a great job with your research, and it's a wonderful story, and I'm glad it had a happy ending. And here's a special award for you as well. So congratulations. Ian Taylor? Hi James. Yeah. Why don't you face the, face the audience here? Um, what grade are you in? Eighth grade? Who's your teacher? And, um, are your parents here? Uh, let's give them a round of applause. They have to kind of prompt you to do this, or you just wanted to do it on your own? Ah, okay. Um, so tell us a little bit about your story. So, uh, what was, there was an image prompt, and you, you had to look at the image, and then you had to write about it? So what was the image like? Ah, okay. And, uh, and this is kind of a dark story. Uh, so, it has, it does not have a happy ending. Uh, but, um, so, um, what did you kind of use as your, your, uh, resources in terms of putting this together, coming up with the storyline? This, and this story does, it's, it's a little, it's a little dark. Um, it's more than a little dark, it's very dark. And, uh, but it, uh, uh, it deals with a situation that unfortunately I think is, uh, far too prevalent in our society, it deals with, um, abuse, and it deals with suicide as well, so. In the end, the main character winds up taking his life, unfortunately. Uh, after being abused by his father, and kind of ignored by the rest of the world, so. So it was, it was a tough story. Was it tough to write for you? Well, it certainly was emotional, and it certainly, uh, was a good story, and kept us riveted, kept me riveted, at least, to the, to the text, and, uh, congratulations. It was Nora, so let's have Nora come back up here and get her picture. Here it comes. It's Nora. You're the pretty one. Okay, thank you, congratulations again. I just wanna say congratulations to all of the students that participated, because they're all winners, they all have benefited by, uh, this, this competition. I know that, I know from hearing from the judges that it was a difficult decision to make for them, uh, to choose some winners in these categories, but, uh, they, they picked what they called was the best of the crop. Um, but everybody who participated, um, wins in this particular competition. And thanks to, um, parents who support their young authors when they, uh, when they write these compositions, and kind of help crowd them along as they, uh, as they get it done, so. Thank you all very much. Next we have our, uh, middle school awards.
Hello, my name's Justin Jordan, I'm the athletic coordinator here, we have, uh, a lot of middle school students that are very excited lined up in the hallway here, so, uh, this season, this, uh, winter sports season, we're fortunate to have, uh, four teams all win NCJC, so we're gonna let them kind of cycle through, uh, introduce their players here briefly, um, but we're gonna start with, uh, middle school scholastic bowl, Coach Joel Madlak.
Hello everyone, I'm Joel Madlak, middle schools class bowl coach. Uh, this year I had the privilege of coaching this great group of kids. We had an awesome season this year, we went undefeated, took first place in NCJC, so, great job guys. Millie Weingartz is one of our team members.
Jared Lanty. Brandon Johnson. Eli Solano. As they're getting their picture taken here, next up we have the eighth grade girls basketball team, and Coach Danny Miller.
Couple of thank yous, uh, before I kind of get started with the girls, I did have a volunteer coach this year, Coach Kaden Carrier, who did an outstanding job. D Team girls went undefeated as well with, uh, our basketball group. We only had 12 total girls this year, which is a really low number, even though we tried to get some more out. Uh, so I've got half of them here, but I'd like to congratulate them, we had 11-3 conference season, and then we overcame some obstacles to beat a Burlington Central team that had beat us twice in the regular season to win that championship game. So proud of them, they did an outstanding job. Great job. So, my teammate Addison Armstrong. Callie Countryman. Cindy Fabrizius. RJ Graziano. Reese Harper. Anna Shawless.
Next up we have the seventh grade girls basketball team, and head coach.
I'd give you a round of the seventh grade girls basketball, though. Um, you know, the girls worked hard, they, you know, went together as a team, went 13-1 in conference, and, you know, won, won NCJC by 22 points. So it was a big game for them, they were very excited about that. Um, they were fun to coach, it was a pleasure to work with them this year for sure. Is that what you think?
I think in, uh, the 30-plus years I've been here, I was talking to Coach Miller, we can't remember a back-to-back seventh grade championship on top of an eighth grade championship in the same year. So a lot of great things, time to say more. As Coach said, these ladies were a joy to coach. Everybody stepped up at different times, at different games, when we had adversity, and again, they made Sycamore proud, so thank you.
Molly Butler. And then before we get started with the high school, we have our middle school wrestling team, which had a great season, so Coach Colpood, back there, can you hear me? Wrestling team, come on up.
How's it going, guys? Middle school wrestling, the head coach. Um, I've had an amazing group of guys this year, I was lucky to have coached them. Really hardworking. Um, we had a stor, we had a historical season this year for Sycamore Middle School Wrestling. Uh, we finished the year 21-0. We won all four of our tournaments, including the conference. Uh, and then at the end of the year, we have our state series. Um, and then we ended up with 16 state qualifiers, and five placers. That was just this last weekend. So I can give a quick round of applause for them. Um, you know, it, it's a lot of work, you know, dealing with all these kids, keeping them in line, um, you know, they, they wanna goof around sometimes, um, but luckily, the group of kids that I had were very disciplined, and they listened, did what they were told, knew what they needed to do, and when it came time to wrestle, they got the job done. They were there for business, behaved themselves like gentlemen, for the most part. And, uh, I just love coaching them. Uh, I've continued to do it for years, and hopefully we can match this season, uh, sometime in the future, maybe next year. I'm losing like half the team with going into high school, it's kind of bittersweet, you know? I'm gonna miss them, at the same time, I'm excited to see, uh, their career build, both as a student and as a wrestler going forward. I would say I'm really proud of you guys. Uh, just real quick, I'm gonna read off a list of names of the kids that are on my team. Ben Anderson, TJ Anderson, Henry Armour, Carter Behringer, Noah Carlson, Adam Carrick, Chase Cook, Dylan Curtis, Aiden Daring, Sawyer Davis, Jaden Dohan, Joshua Emmer, Jasmine Enriquez, Aiden Gemberling, Douglas Gemberling, Alex Gorski, Colin Hughes, Holden Girgatis, James McConkey, Maddox McLaughlin, Maddox Mc, uh, did I say James McConkey? Maddox McRoberts, Jackson Miller, uh, William Moska, Jack Nordstrom, Clyde Knott, Charlie Olson, Jackson Paul, Kaden Ralph, Alex Rink, Ryan Rowan, Preston Rubek, David Ruiz, Ian Ruiz, Liam Schrader, Tyler Sullivan, John Turner, Sawyer Valdez, Alex Van Mastroi, Eden Barner, and Carson West. Give a round of applause. Nice job, guys, congratulations, I hope to see all you guys next year, uh, all the seventh and sixth graders, and hopefully you guys go out and wrestle in high school, pay prayers.
The wrestlers, if you could form two lines and come get your medals, and then we're gonna take a picture right over here.
Thank you, guys.
Hi everybody, I'm Nate Wright, I'm the new student of high school, Mr. Carrick, uh, was unable to attend tonight, he's running a indoor track meet right now, so I have the honor of presenting our high school athletes and athletes, uh, that are gonna be tucking nights tonight, so. Um, first off, we have girls basketball. Coach Witness, Evan are here, representing our girls basketball team.
Small in numbers, but mighty in height here, so. Uh, most of our girls are busy doing track soccer, they've got a little bit of everything going on, so that's kind of why we only have a couple of people here representing us. Um, but we had another successful season, uh, this is the ninth straight 20-win season for the program. Um, we won our sixth conference title in a row, third regional in a row, uh, we've got a lot of people that have been named to AP All-State teams, um, Player of the Year right here for the Daily Chronicle, uh, we had other people that were IBCA All-State members, um, and, and our program has gotten a lot of notoriety throughout the season, um, from, from lots of different coaches that have coached against, but then also from different press entities as well. So it's been a really, really fun group to coach, started off a little sluggish, we were 1-7, uh, I think that there were a few calls to some of the girls on the teams from some of the people that they play with in the summer, like, is everything okay, are you guys, you doing alright? Uh, but we had, we had played several of the top 4A schools in the state, competed with some of them, got our bus hooked in by a couple of them. Uh, but it paid off in the long term, and we ended up turning the season around, we ended up winning conference, won 13-1 in conference, 21-13 overall with a regional title where we thoroughly, uh, beat one of our rivals, Camden, so that was a lot of fun. Uh, especially since I teach over there, I got to look at some of the kids' faces the next day, so it was nice. Um, but it's been a lot of fun being at the head of the program, we appreciate the board for always recognizing us and always supporting us. I see, uh, Dr. Wilder always retweeting a lot of the tweets that I send out there, so I appreciate the support and love, so. Community's been awesome, uh, thank you for honoring us tonight, and we're very appreciative and humble for all the praise that we get. Yeah, so here are the people that are on the basketball team. Grace Antman, Mallory Armstrong, Annie Brandt, Megan Brandon, Lexie Carlson, Carly Carpenter, Evan Carrier, Kate Elsner, Sophia Kalasic, Courtney Krzingle, Monroe McGee, Mallory Mori, Kate Stacy, and Taylor Wesley. So just really great season, had a lot of fun being at the high school, and look forward to meeting more.
Next up, we have our boys bowling team. Coach Aaron Williams.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Coach Williams. This year, we were very small numbers, but we finished the season, conference season, seven and three. Conference champ, conference tournament champ also. And then we went into our regional, and we actually won the regional against a pretty tough school. We did have a state qualifier out of that regional. Evan Orwitz was our lone state qualifier. And we did, we did okay at state. It was the first time a state had experienced, had a good time. Made a lot of progress from the beginning of the season to the end of the season. So Evan, Evan is our state qualifier. Austin Broton, who has moved away, I believe, Logan Jones. Owen Meyer. Kayden Von Shinnett. And Riley Boats. We wanna thank the board for supporting us and always doing this for us. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Next up, we have Coach George Johansson and our girls bowling team.
I'll wait till they get up here just so I can moderately embarrass them. I've been a little bad. I'm George Johansson, I'm the head coach of the girls bowling program. This year, these girls had a whale of a season. They bowl tournaments every single weekend, I think the only two Saturdays we had off between Veterans Day and Valentine's Day were Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. These girls put more work in than just about anybody that I've ever seen, and the results show for it. We had, we did win regionals, which was phenomenal feat for them. We also won another tournament in Dixon, the Oregon Hawk invite. We had multiple top-five finishes throughout the season as well. Multiple all-tournament teams. We did have three girls place all-conference. We took second in conference this year, rolled best conference, and then the tournament. And on top of that, we had a perfect game thrown at the Suiwee tournament, so Maxine Latham shot three hundred there. So I'd like to introduce them as they go by, so Randy Stover. We are a small program, and I am missing one young lady, Kiki Wittenberg was all-conference as well, as for Randy and Maxine. So again, they had a whale of a season as well. Thank you for the recognition, it shows the support that all the programs have, I appreciate it.
Next up, we go with our varsity wrestling team.
Alright, well, thanks for coming tonight. You know, our team is a little slacking tonight, but they had a lot of track, a lot of other things to do tonight. The season went pretty well this year. We ended up, we started out small, our football team was doing well this year, so that kind of caused a little lacking in our lineup, so we started out small. We ended up sixteen and twelve, we won regionals, bigger than that. We sent three kids to state tournament, and we got three medal winners. We had one here that was, we count the rest of the year, two third places and a fifth place. I thought we did really well. Looking forward to the future. It's gonna be a young team next year, a young team this year, and I love the challenge. Thank you guys for coming and honoring us, appreciate it. Zach Crawford, Gus Candier, Thomas Lynn, Cole Klyzer.
Coach talked about our three qualifiers for state. Gus qualified third place at a hundred and fifty-two pounds. Zach, third place at a hundred and sixty pounds, and also Lincoln Cooley at two hundred and eighty-five pounds. So that's, he was fifth place at state. Other members that aren't here, Cooper Bodie, Ethan Bodie. I'm gonna just go through everybody here. Jonathan Buckeister, Gus is here, Gable Carrick, Jayden Cochran, Lincoln Cooley, Zed's here, Gabe Prohm, Tyler Curtis, Cole Klyzer, Tom Lynn, Tyler Lockhart, Michael Olson, James Oros, and Logan Sandbox, all on that boys wrestling team. And as a former math teacher, the last near year of my heart is our mathletes, our math team. Come on up. Math team's coached by our math teachers, Jason Kavanaugh, Andy Moore, Leah Keen, and Adam Bulkin. They go down to Ottawa for the conference tournament, or conference competition, right? They compete in everything from geometry all the way up to calculus. They had an interesting adventure this year because their bus broke down, and we had to send a bus all the way to Ottawa to get them, but luckily, Coach Kavanaugh knew somebody that owned a pizza joint in town. They sent the pizzas that were destined for the basketball game to the, our bus, and then they made more pizzas for the basketball game in Ottawa, so we got first strikes on the pizza over at Ottawa down there too. So not only did we beat them, we also took their pizza too, so it was outstanding. So Jordan has offered to be the honorary spokesperson for the math team tonight, so I'll let you talk about your team. So you can read your team.
Do I have to read all the names?
Yeah, you can read some of your all the names.
There's a lot of names. We have like twenty-six people on our math team, all grades, freshmen to seniors, I'm Jordan Tilstra.
I'm Tadevito.
I'm Randy Jamrod. The rest of our mathletes cannot make it. They're not dead, they're just not here. It was actually really fun to like go down and like be a math nerd, which is not a sentence I would like to say again, but it was just a really great time, it felt just good, and we won a lot of awards, and absolutely just killed it, it was.
There is quite a number of students here, so I'm gonna get through this list the best I can here. Team members are Lucinda Davison, Kayden Emmer, Amanda Jamrod, Daniel Martin, Christian McConkey, Duchon Nie, Maddie Stacy, Trinkie Villaseca, Henry Bisco, John Cerny, Ty Tadevito, Jordan Tilstra, Any Berry, Cal Harbecky, or sorry, Cal Harbecky, Wesley Hodgland, Elizabeth McConkey, Alyssa Stacy, Trevor Sidley, Liam Barry, Nate Burgess, Morgan Cook, Evan Davis, Morgan Hendricks, Calvin Hodgland, Samantha Maxwell, Ethan Mueller, and Justin Root. Quite an incredible list of individuals. It's something like the twelfth or thirteenth year in a row we've won the math competition in conference, so we are dominating our conference in the math world, so. Thank you very much on behalf of the high school industry.
Well, it's always a pleasure to see our athletes and our mathletes, and to be able to present them under some recognition, so. I think I'm clogging to the seats right now. But we do appreciate their accomplishments, and we certainly do appreciate the way they represent our school district when they compete. If sports does anything, hopefully it instills character in these young men and women, and it seems to have done that with our athletes, so congratulations to them for that accomplishment as well. Next item is audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? We'll move on then to communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters. All kinds of interesting letters, newsletters. I like one letter that said that hundreds of, hundreds of bills are passed out at the legislature. Because there's a new system now, it might be adding as a speaker anymore. They don't hold the bills out, they actually have to send them out by March fifteenth. And so they are out there, and then there are some interesting ones if you read the documents that we received, so. We'll see what happens. They're not all likely to pass like they are. FOIA requests, there were two, both of which have been responded to. Committee reports.
The planning and doing meeting. I have a Spartan Senate update, so we have our Friday meeting, March third. We covered a whole series of topics. The first one, though, well, the old business was the parking survey result. They've been weighing, doing numbered spots, the high school parking lot versus just doing, you know, the same way that it's been going, so they're gonna survey a little more, it sounds like. They already conducted a survey, but then the committee wasn't really happy with the information that you can make a decision with, so it sounds like we need a little more information. They also talked about the student handbook under new business. Our very own Nate Wright is proposing some changes to the cell phone policy. Well, I shouldn't say changes, but firming things up to the cell phone policy and the attendance policy establishing procedure, which I thought was really good. So you're gonna basically see steps of discipline that will happen, so now there's gonna be pointable recourse, so I think it'll make things more consistent. There's no questioning that there is a cell phone problem at the high school. I mean, just a cell phone problem, I think, just systemically, but it causes all these issues, so addressing that is gonna be really big. We didn't get a chance to touch on safety and security, the RFID cards, and common expectations, so. That was Spartan Senate. If you have any comments or questions.
Is there any kind of link to how these assigned spaces were handed out? Does this first come first served?
Yeah, well, they talked about a whole series of options. They weighed out the lottery system, they weighed out like selling them, you know, based on tiers. The big concern was just because you have assigned spaces doesn't guarantee you're going to actually have that, and then it creates this situation where now you have to reinforce it. So, and then you have everybody kind of parking in. Now, you know, if someone's in spot one, so spot one parks in spot two, and spot two parks in spot three, and now the whole thing collapses, so that was the chief issue. But there would be no cost associated with doing it, like a big thing, as well, would it cost more? They were saying we could just paint the lines, it wouldn't be an issue, because they're already off their painting. Yeah, so just more, I think more feedback is gonna be solicited from the stakeholders to see if there's a really good idea that surfaces, so.
Yeah, that'll be interesting to see how that turns out.
Yeah, yeah, I, for one, know the parking lot can be a little tricky, even if you park with a guest, so.
Anything else for committee reports? Superintendent for Business Services.
Alright, so tonight I have, we're talking fees, so starting with student fees, this is something that we look at every year. And we examine where those fees are at and if we need to adjust them. So I do have a couple recommendations tonight for the board to take into consideration. And so they're up there highlighted. The first one is our high school ag class, with the cost of chemicals going up with metal and wood. We're looking to increase that class fee from fifty dollars to sixty dollars. And then, just as a background, I do work with Mr. Carlson at the high school, who makes these recommendations to me with the high school fees. The high school tech helped us, that was a class that ran pre-COVID. And so those were students that were able to work on the technology pieces that we had in that building to try to help out our staff. That class has not ran the last couple of years, so Mr. Carlson felt like we should just remove it from the list at this time. High school graduation tickets. So currently, we do, everyone gets five tickets for free, and then anything after that is five dollars. With moving the high school graduation back to the field house this year, that causes us to have to rent chairs and things of that nature, a stage. And we've seen those prices go up dramatically from when we did it four years ago. So his recommendation was to continue to give the five first free tickets out, but then raise those graduation tickets from five dollars to ten dollars. Replacement IDs, so Michael brought up the new RFID tags that we rolled out with our transportation department, and we're starting to utilize that with other programs within the schools. So currently, the IDs that we get just have a barcode on them, and those are a little cheaper. So when students lose those, they come in and we charge two dollars for those. RFID tags are a bit more expensive, and so we're proposing that we would raise those replacement IDs from two dollars to five dollars to be able to cover our costs. Fieldhouse pass, this was something, again, that we had pre-COVID, where we would open up the field house on a Saturday, we had a field house worker in there, people could come in and walk the track, they could play basketball. We haven't opened that back up since COVID, and also, I'm gonna talk about our building use here in the next couple of slides. Our field house just is not available very often, I mean, it is used every single day, every hour of the day. So Mr. Carrick felt like that was something that we could just take off the list, since it's not something that we do anymore, or probably won't be able to do. And then Oscar, I provided a memo from Mrs. Walls. She has some recommendations to increase those fees a couple dollars per day. That is solely based on the cost of the minimum wage going up, so we had to raise that to fifteen dollars an hour. And so again, she has to make sure that she's covering her cost, and that that program does bring in a little bit of surplus. So those are the recommended changes for next year, on the next slide, and I know this is really small, and I apologize for that, but you guys do have this in your board packet. So every year, we do like to look at what other schools are charging, just to make sure, you know, we're not doing something totally out of whack, or that maybe we need to reexamine what we're targeting for instructional fees. You'll see with all of our surrounding districts that we're pretty in line with all of our instructional fees. And this is just a survey that we do every year, and I'd like to provide that to you guys, so you can take a look at that. So tonight's just a first reading. I'll let you guys ask any questions, and then I'll bring this back at the end of April for a final approval.
I know we brought this up last year, and I guess I'm just wondering, is it just a pipe dream to think of instructional fees ever going down, or like on a downward trend, or is that just a must-have component? Like, I'm just looking at like half, like the all-day kindergarten, or the first and fifth grade, but they seem small enough individually where it'd go, okay, well, how much of an effect on the budget would it have if we just eliminated them? And I know there's, I'm... And I know there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's some income adjustments that can be made if needed.
Yes, so we bring in about a half a million dollars with instructional fees, which doesn't sound like a ton of money in our overall budget. But if we lost a half a million dollars, that equates to a lot of expenditures that I guess we have to look at, maybe from a staffing perspective, because that's our largest expenditure. So if we were to eliminate those instructional fees, I think that would be detrimental to our budget overall. I I just think with the cost of everything going up, I don't ever see those going down. Can you answer that question, Michael?
Do, and they do, though, there is income tiers in terms of who does have to pay.
Yeah, so we, so anyone who qualifies for our free lunch program, their instructional fees are waived. So we currently have about, I think, six hundred students that, excuse me, eight hundred and fifty students that are that qualify in that free category. So they don't pay instructional fees at all. And then our reduced students, they still pay their instructional fees. They get a reduced cost for lunch. And then obviously we have our paid students. We do work with our families that aren't able to pay at all upfront. We have numerous families that are on payment plans. Ellie Bag, who's in my office, she generates a statement every month and she works with those families just so they can get on a payment plan that works through their house.
Awesome. That's great.
I think they're reasonable, you know, especially with the rate of inflation.
And we adjusted them a couple of years ago, too, when we went one-to-one to try to reduce some costs for the devices. But we still felt like it was really reasonable.
Do you know if the eliminated fees kind of balance out the increases in the fees?
Well, I think because of the two that we're eliminating, we were, Fieldhouse pass, we definitely weren't bringing in a lot of revenue with that, even when...
So that wasn't something that everybody was charged?
No, no, that was just that the community wanted to come in. Yeah. And so honestly, we were probably losing money in that scenario because we were hiring a field house worker and there weren't enough people coming in using it. And then the tech helped us, yeah. I don't think, I don't think losing that money was gonna offset anything.
And that was only at the high school, right? Anything else about the student fees?
Okay, building use fees, so so this encompasses a couple of different things. This is looking at just our buildings in general and this is all of our buildings. So we do rent out all seven of our buildings. Obviously, the high school is used the most and then the middle school and then our elementary will be after that. We also look at our auditorium specifically because that gets used a lot for outside, like, a dance company comes in and runs a performance in there, so they're able to utilize our auditorium for that. So we kind of have two different applications that we have depending on the rental that we're doing. So I just like to show every year how many events we're having in our buildings. And again, this is all seven buildings. Majority of it is at the high school. And we break out our charges by priority. So priority A would be anything in-house or anyone that we have in governmental agreements with, other governmental entities within the city. Priority B would be all of our Sycamore community-based teams. So like Titans, Forests, Fury, those are all students that are gonna feed into our athletic program. Priority C would be any non-Sycamore community-based programs or not-for-profits would fall under that category. And then priority D would be just a for-profit that's renting our facilities. So you can see the majority of our events are priority A. So our own students are using the building all the time, which is great. And then priority B would be the Nats. Those would be all our Sycamore teams that are utilizing it when it's available. And then we do have a not-for-profit that utilizes our building. The Three Fire Council is a Boy Scout unit that comes. They're not from around here, but they love coming out to Sycamore. So Mr. Holland, owner, he kind of works with them and runs that with them.
That is the Boy Scout Council for this district.
What's that?
That's the Boy Scout Council for this district.
Yep, yep, yep.
It's for the whole.
For the whole, yes. But they've said they like coming out here. They've rented other places, but they like something, so, which is great. We love having them. And they use the entire high school when they come for their training. And then we have a couple of for-profits, like I said, I think, like NIBC comes, Govation comes and uses it. And there's a couple of other that come into other events in the auditorium. So our buildings are getting used all the time. So the thing that we look at with building use fees is really making sure that we're covering our costs. So anything on the weekends, we don't have custodians for, so they come in. And so they're charged a fee for staffing as well as the building rental. And so just looking at making sure we're charging enough to cover those costs. We did revise these fees a couple of years ago, but just looking at over the last couple of years, we feel like we're in a good place. So I don't have any recommendations to change those fees for this one this year. And you can see there's different charges for different places in the buildings. The field house is usually the biggest one that's rented, especially by our youth sports, so. So again, tonight's just a first reading and then I'll bring this back also at the end of April for a final approval. Anyone have any questions? I can't answer those.
Looks like you're up, though.
Very simple. Just gotta, just gotta do it already.
Superintendent.
Good evening. So back at the very beginning of the year, we had a discussion in the board being about personalized learning and implementing and working towards the implementation of personalized learning. This is a marathon, not a sprint. It's a process that's probably gonna take multiple years. So that was a future-focused item at one point. We've had some time set aside to discuss that and give the board an update and haven't had an opportunity to do that quite yet. So this isn't quite future-focused, kind of, kind of something we've talked about, but it is work that's gonna continue into the future. So what I thought I'd do is ask Mr. Rice to come and speak with us this evening and kind of give the board an update in terms of where we're at with personalized learning, although we're changing the name a little bit. So I don't go into that. I'll let Mr. Rice talk about that and discuss why the name change as well as the progress that we've made in that endeavor. So what was yours?
I don't really know where to stand. It's weird because the camera's over there and the guy's over here, so I don't know. I'm gonna stand here. Probably, I'm gonna talk to the guys, too. So I've all, I've been told when I come, I have a lot of energy, so I'm gonna try to bring it down. I scheduled a two-hour curriculum review right before this meeting tonight, so it definitely helped me bring my energy down a little bit because that was hard work. But I I say that kind of jokingly, it was hard work and it helped bring my energy down. But it reminds me, like, there's a lot going on in our school district. And this is just one of the things that are going on in our school district. And so kind of to Steve's point, this is not a race. It's not a marathon. It's not something we're trying to accomplish by the end of the year. And I think we have to acknowledge that there is a lot of thought that goes into this. There's a lot of time and a lot of planning. So some of this that I'm going to talk about tonight, you'll have heard, I don't even have slides. That's how low-key I'm gonna be today. You'll have heard some of this. I wanna review some of it, just kind of talk about where we've been and then I'll kind of switch into kind of where we're heading. So we've been working as an administrative team since before school started on this. And I think it felt was really important to us that before we approached the staff with something and said, this is where we want to go, this is where we want to take the district, that we all felt like we were on the same page on that. So we partnered with the Institute for Personalized Learning, which is shifting their name to I-4PL. You're gonna hear a lot of kind of moving away from certain language here as I talk, and I think that's intentional. But we've partnered with them and a woman named Kate Somerville comes down and kind of facilitates some of our meetings for us. We've met with them, we've met on this topic at least once a month, probably with them four or five times since the beginning of the school year to really talk about that, what's our why, what does learner-centered education mean to us? And why do we use that term now rather than personalized learning? I think as we started to talk about it as an administrative team, we realized how much of these practices are going on here in Sycamore right now. We are lucky to work in a pretty learner-centered district where our teachers do value our students. I'll probably say it again at the end. You guys hear me say this every single time. Our staff hears me say this every time I talk. It's all about relationships. If we don't start with relationships, then we can't do anything in this field. And so that's that's the drum we keep beating this year. To kind of just add a little bit of a side note here, it wouldn't be me if I didn't. You know, we just kind of had our our last big district in-service of the year on February, in February. And we had a speaker named Amish Brewer come. It went over really well with our staff, I think, and his big thing was also relationships. And so if you remember me talking about what we did back in October, her name was Monica Jenta. She really beat that drum of relationships and getting to know our students and caring for each other. So all of this stuff kind of goes back to those relationships and centering around our learning. And I think the other reason why we talk about shifting off of that idea of personalized learning to more learner-centered education and with some of the conversations I've had, even with some people on the board, when questions come up, I think personalized learning gets a bad rap sometimes. I think people think that it's purely technology-driven, that it's just students on a computer and that it's adaptive software and that it's trying to make sure that they get exactly what they need, but the teacher's out of it. I think sometimes people hear personalized learning and it's too far, like, wait, is this just students get to pick whatever they want to learn whenever they want? And no, that's not really what we're trying to talk about. Really what we're trying to talk about are ways to take their curriculum and the things that, okay. Don't wanna get too much into what we just talked about. But all the things that we talked about, like at our ELA meeting, the stuff that's so important that our students know, the things that they'd be able to do, how do we help them access that in ways that are really meaningful to them? And the easiest way to talk about that is to shift from teaching to learning. And so that idea of learner-centered education, I think that's why you're gonna hear us kind of talk about that a little bit more. So we've been working with that institute for quite some time. And kind of where we've settled on and where we're at right now is a point where we're starting to look to bring in more stakeholders. So we've started to draft a definition of what does learner-centered education mean here in Sycamore. Don't have that right now because we definitely want to get some more feedback before we kind of roll that out. I don't want anything to kind of get out there and people think that's what we're calling it. We've realized across the way that, or as we've done this work, that there's probably some vocabulary that we need to talk about district-wide and what this means. So starting to put together a handbook of things like, what is intervention? What do we mean when we say learner-centered education? What is a personalized capacity, competency? What is mastering? What do all those words mean? When we start talking about that and we talk about students, so that everybody K-12, EC-12 can talk about those words and mean the same thing. And then really talking about what our entry point to this work with our staff and our stakeholders want it to be. I think you've probably heard me talk about learner profiles before. My past experience with this was learner profiles and that's basically just a quick overview of students really reflecting on who they are as a learner, what their goals are and kind of how we can best support them as teachers. And then making that available to our staff so that they can kind of access that and move forward with it and use that in their planning. And that students use that in their planning as well. That's on the horizon, but I think as we've talked as a team and as we've worked with the institute, as we've gotten some at least minimal feedback from our stakeholders, I think what's really going to help us move forward is going to be the graduate profile. Graduate profile is something pretty similar to what we have. We have a really strong strategic design, but our strategic design is also really, really vague. And so what we've talked about is working with, as an administrative team, with our teachers, with our students, with our community members. What is it that when a Spartan walks across the stage, and it's, I guess, serendipitous that today we all learned we will all be Spartans, so I can use that word now and actually mean Spartans. But when a Spartan walks across the stage, what does that mean? We've got core values. We know what we want that to mean, but what does it actually look like? And so what we want to start talking about are what are those things that students, that our Spartans know, do, embody? And then talk about taking that from the 12th grade level all the way down into EC and what does that look like? What do those experiences need to look like in a classroom? So that it's not just, yeah, all of our students value equality. What have we explicitly done to teach that lesson, to give students the opportunity to grow and to get better in that? We started that process at that last student service day. So we asked all of our, all of our teachers three questions. We asked them, what is one major obstacle or challenge that our students are currently facing? We asked them, what's the most important part of our learning environment to help students succeed? And we asked them, what's the most important skill or disposition that they think a Spartan should have after graduation? They all wrote those on these little honeycomb-looking things or hexagon-looking things. We're gonna put together a nice visual for everybody to look at and then come from that, try to do some affinity grouping and say, this is what we think a Spartan should have. Take that from our strategic design, take that input, work with some student-focused groups, talk with groups like the CAC and other community groups, and try to bring that together. And I think our target date for that at the very latest would be next fall. But to be honest with you, for me, I'd love to have that in the spring so that we can start planning forward of what next year is going to look like. So our next steps then after we work on that that portrait of a graduate or what that graduate profile looks like, is to really then work with our community stakeholders and finalize that definition of learner-centered education. So I hope that the next time I can come up here and stand in front of you, unveiling that definition. Here's what we need. When we put our, we plant our flag here and say, Sycamore, we value learner-centered education. We've gotten enough feedback from enough people that we can all say that and all speak to it and all know what it means. We want to make sure that we work on that district vocabulary and kind of along with that vocabulary, too, starting to kind of put together this almost handbook of, I guess, instructional practices? Because they're already happening. But I think we have to empower people to know, when you make this decision about how you're supporting your student and putting them at the center of your work, you're doing exactly what we're talking about and affirming those decisions. I I talk about this a lot in terms of like guardrails. And this isn't so much curricular guardrails, but it's instructional guardrails. I think so often our staff is just kind of left to hope they're doing the right thing. We are very lean. We don't get to get in the classrooms and give them that feedback as often as we would like. Our department chairs, our building leadership teams, our team leaders in the elementary, all of us have full-time jobs on top of what they're trying to get done. So sometimes I think our teachers are doing awesome things and just hoping they're doing the right thing. So part of the, part of the rationale here isn't to flip the switch and say we're gonna hit the reset button. It's to say, these are the things we value here. These are the things we've seen that are working. These are the things we want to add to that pool. But we also want you to know that when you're making these decisions and doing these things, you are on the right track. So that's a piece that we really want to work on as well. We want to create kind of some of those pioneer teams. So like I said, this is happening. We've got some of our principals sitting on there, some of our staff sitting on there right now. We can talk about things that are very learner-centered happening in classrooms right now. I had a list that was gonna be earlier and I didn't read it, so I'll need to go back a page. But, you know, I talked to Lisa Winters and some of the work that she's doing with our math team at the elementary level and the math talks that they have with students. And I think when I went to school and I learned how to do math, that sounds weird, when I learned how to math or whatever it was, I sat at my desk and the teacher kind of talked to me about how to add, like, we did the, we did arithmetic all together on the board. If you walk into some of our math classrooms right now, it's completely different and it's so much more learner-centered. My son comes home, he's in first grade, and he talks to me about how he solved the problem, why he picked it the way he did and why his partner maybe didn't pick it the way they did. And empowering students to not only make those choices, but to know when and how and that there are other opportunities out there. And that's a hugely learner-centered practice. So we've got things like that going on. Obviously, we've talked about win time here and the ability for teachers to say, this is what my student needs. I think that's that's a step closer to learner-centered education because our teachers are still the ones in the driver's seat there. And every step of the way here, we're trying to put our students more in the driver's seat. But there's awesome things happening there that are different for every single student and each one is very learner-centered. We talk about things like here at the middle school when they did significant seventy-two and really tried to focus on the SCL needs of our students. Differentiating that based on different groups. And we've talked administratively, too, on how do we get a handle on some of those SCL needs so that we can more explicitly target those. And then finally, things like Spartan stretch in the high school, again, very learner-centered practice where, what does this student need? How do I get them to my rooms so that I can give them them? Again, so much of that is built on the backs of teachers that we're trying to give more autonomy to students so that they can be more active in that process. But there's things happening now that are really cool that we want to highlight and kind of help move forward and look at while we try to kind of keep moving and evolve. So those are some of the things that are happening now. So we want to learn from those teachers. We want to learn from those staff members and say, how did you get there? What did you learn? What did you read? What did you do? And how do we help the rest of the staff kind of come along with that? We want to empower those people and give them some training, take them up to schools that are doing some of these things that have been doing it longer than we have or things like that. And so they can feel like they're equipped to then come back, almost not really a train-the-trainer model, but I think investing in our people so that they can help lead this alongside us. The Institute for Personalized Learning has a summer convening. Last year we attended that. Not as a full administrative team because the opportunity kind of came up relatively late. We hope to bring as many people back to that as we can, as well as staff this time. And start to bring some of our staff up there so they can start to hear from other practitioners in the field, this is what it looks like in my fashion. This is what it means to be learner-centered. And we've talked about what coaching is gonna have to shift them to the wall to. And this ties back to the meeting I had earlier tonight, but just this idea of collective self-efficacy and all of us believing that we can do it and this idea of growth mindset and risk trading. And our staff and our students... And, and our staff and our students being open to that and being willing to take those risks and try new things. And do things that maybe don't look exactly the way they always did because it's, it's actually going to help students engage a little bit more, um, personally. If it's something that's, excuse me, built around them. Um, the institute also does these bootcamp sessions that because remember is literally anyone in this room that works or is associated with the district can sign up and kind of learn a little bit more about, so what does this actually mean? What is this idea or this concept? So it's like a primer, um, on what a learner-centered education is. So that's kind of some of the next steps, some of the things that we want to do with our staff. I, I, I hope as you hear me talking, it's shifting now from kind of that administrative, let's gather knowledge, let's build our philosophy. To let's start to put some of these pieces into action. Um, you know, our portion of a graduate then, once we finalize that, I think we have to start talking about how, like I, I said some of these things, I'm repeating myself and I'm sorry, but how we really then go back and explicitly embed those tools. So I met with that, that ELA, that English Language Arts Fricking Revision Team tonight. And it's, to me like, that's all that's on my mind right now. Um, but there's so much that they have to do, but I think a piece that would help them would say, when we make these instructional decisions. When we talk about how we're going to teach all these things that we, we're saying that our students need to learn or what a resource needs to look like. Let's not forget about what our goals are, what we want our graduates to look like. How do these resources help us actually get there? Some of those resources are a lot different now. We talk about things like Freklin, Eastpart, um, that are more adaptive. And that's kind of some of that more technology side of personalized learning. But how are we going to make sure students are actually getting what they need? And how are we making sure that we are trying to focus around them and our resources allow us to do that? As opposed to kind of like when I went to school and even when I taught, and we had one big English anthology. And we all taught all the same thing. Students, you're learning this. But I think, you know, that's changed to thematic approaches. And now we can have students reading different things at different levels, but still engaging in the same conversation. Um, I think this also will help us kind of as we start to narrow that down and look at some of those indicators. And the last time I was here, I was talking about the school report card and we talked a little about math data and those sorts of pieces. But as we start to talk about a graduate profile and those things that we want to expect, is it coming upon us to say like, how do we measure that? And so we can start to look at, are we seeing some of these things that we want a Spartan to be able to know, be able to do? Are we seeing them grow up through the ranks? Or are we just hoping by the time they graduate that they're able to do all these things? Uh, I think I spoke very briefly to this last time too. And these are the sorts of things the state's going to ask us to report on in the future on our state report card. And they want to talk about college readiness indicators and what things are happening after school, uh, after a secondary school or high school. And where, where our kids are going. And I think this sort of approach will help us with that. And I already talked about kind of the guardrail piece. Um, just giving staff some sort of kind of input on, this is kind of what the instructional bubble looks like. Not that you have to all do things the same way, but if you're in this field, you're doing something right. And I think they deserve that affirmation. So, and it's calm and as short as I can be, that was kind of a little bit of an overview, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Or expand on anything I just talked about. Go for it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, you, you talked about, um, students setting goals and bringing, you know, bringing them into, into the picture. But I, I was just wondering, what if, what if your goals change? And you know, I, I, I'm just thinking college experience, you know, you go thinking you want to do one thing. And you get halfway through it and you say, ah, gosh, I really don't like this. I want to go somewhere else. We only have a limited, you know, period of time. You can't take another semester or two or three, uh, to kind of get you back where you want to go, so.
I think the goal setting from students comes, I mean, first and foremost, I think a lot of that goal setting is tied more on the SCL component. So like, how do I want to grow as a person and as a learner? Not so much the content piece. Um, but when it does tie back to the learning, I think it's, these are, I'm a teacher in a classroom. These are the standards that we all have to address, but we can have a conversation about how you're going to get there. So if your goal is to become a better writer and you want to focus on developing writing skills as you approach, as you kind of gather this knowledge. You might demonstrate for me your knowledge as, as a writer where someone else might demonstrate it in a speech or a presentation. So they have some choice, but that's kind of speaks back to that guardrail piece. Those, those curricular standards can't change. Like they have to be, that's that common viable curriculum that we have to have. And that's what makes things equitable for our kids. But where we can give them voice and how they achieve those things. Um, I think we talk, when we talk about learner-centered education, it's usually two things that we can talk about. It's how students learn. So, you know, if, if we're all talking about theme, like that's kind of back to my former analogy. You know, I, when I was teaching, all of my students read to Phil and Aki where we were talking about justice and friendship, like they're all the same. We don't have to. There's just so many books out there that, that can speak to those themes. So this is a place where they could have some choice in a goal. Like I want to read something by a different sort of author. Or I want to challenge myself to read something else, but still engage in that conversation. So that's a why. Or how, like I want to improve my skills in this certain area and I can demonstrate that to my teacher in a certain way. But there's still a four of, these are the expectations for the class. And that kind of helps us keep the, keep that ball rolling so they don't get too far away from us. If that makes sense.
That, that means absolute sense, because that's where I would see it. That's how I would see it developed. Um, but, but then, you know, as you're talking, I'm thinking to myself, it kind of makes us want to rethink what the whole purpose of a high school education really is.
That kind of does, doesn't it? Yeah.
I mean, really it's hard, it's hard to define these days. Because there are so many pathways and so many different ways to get to those pathways, that it becomes rather complicated.
It does. I, I mean, this is more personal than anything, but I think, you know, personally. So, so I'm just going to put this out there with that disclaimer. I don't know that the goal of high school should be to like get students to X, Y, or Z on a content perspective. Like, our job is to make sure they're critical thinkers. Our job is to equip them with enough knowledge to be dangerous in the field that they want to go and kind of explore. Our job is to make sure they get a chance to do some exploration. Um, and, and our job leading all the way up to that is to get them the skills so that they can do those things. That, we're always going to have students that know, that think they know what they want to do. And so we want to make sure we have those pathways for them. But if we graduate students, and that kind of goes back to that graduate profile, if we graduate students that are critical thinkers, that have strong social skills. That, that can exist, like just look at our core values. If we graduate students and we know they can do all those things. I think they've had a successful experience in high school. Um, and then they can go on to the next year. And I think one of the things that we're so good at is creating some of those pathways for kids. Um, that know they want to go down a certain route, but some of those kids that maybe don't know where they want to go yet, there's still a place for them to. And I think that's, we can't lose sight of them either. So, you're right. I mean, it almost speaks back to that kind of humanitarian sort of education system. Like, we just want to make sure everybody gets exposure to everything. Um, so you kind of have to balance that alongside with some of those more specialized fields.
Well, unfortunately, in state curriculum, it kind of defines.
It does.
What the core purpose of a high school is.
And that's why, that's why I put the personally disclaimer on there.
We only have a little bit of room.
I know.
We don't have a lot of, a lot of room.
But that's, and that's why I think the choices, when you, when you can allow, like, if we don't have the room in the what, we do have the, the choices in the how and the, and the why. So I think that's the, that's where we can let the voice come through a little bit. And I'll bet, you know, you guys have been in even longer than I have, that pendulum of the what changes so often. That I think, you know, that those core systems of how we allow students to access their, their education. If we have that built really strongly, then whatever changes around us, I think we're equipped to deal with that and support our kids.
So, so my question was going to, was going to be more about, we have that floor.
Yeah.
The minimum standards that, you know, the state basically says. What, what do we do as far as rigor and choice for the students above that? Based on the conversation, I want to halter that.
Sure.
For lack of a better term, couldn't it be something like a capstone project? For lack of a better term, call it whatever you want. Uh, that maybe they, that is not just a senior thing, but they work on throughout all four years. Because like you said, the pendulum is swinging back and forth. Just a few weeks ago, they were talking about how so many large companies like the, you know, uh, large, I haven't Googled yet, IBM, for example. There's a 60% of their jobs don't require a college degree anymore. They used to. They've changed that. And, and we know that in 15 years, it'll probably swing back the other way. But that's where it's swinging right now. So couldn't the student, couldn't that be something that identified their freshman orientation? Knowing that it's likely going to change. But there are common threads that are intertwined with state curriculum. That gives them a capstone project and that doesn't mean that I'm going to be an aerospace engineer. If your capstone is, you're going to be really good at welding because we need pressure welders. Or you are going to be in an FFA program that takes you down sustainable foods or farming or whatever it might be. So be it. You're probably, you're solving problems, you're critically thinking, you're doing those, all the things that we want them to do. So restructuring the curriculum to do that and just letting the state stuff, I guess. Let the, let the curriculum be outside the box, let the state stuff be the, the threads that are, take you through the box.
I think, I think some of the schools that do this well, and this would be years down the road from us. So anybody listening, anybody watching, this is not what I'm suggesting we do right now. But if some of the schools do this really well, I think you, you almost have students as they get older, that they think of it almost as a thesis defense. Where they talk about, these are the skills and dispositions you have to know and be able to do. These are some of the content pieces. You show me where you're learning it. You might take something you did at a summer church camp, bring it to your English teacher and say, I wrote this for this thing in the summer. I think I just met all of these, um, standards. And you're having that conversation now with your teacher, very much in kind of what we're talking about. Think of how much more active the learner is in that process than just, hey, write me this paper, I'll grade it and get it back to you. So I think as we continue down this road, that's definitely something I'd like to see. Portfolios, capstones, things like that, where students, I mean, that, that speaks back to kind of learner profile idea as well. So that's definitely something I think would come. It's going to take time and it's going to take, um, I think building capacity and just making people comfortable with it. One of the things that's going to hold us back is just, it's different and it's scary. I mean, we're, we're taking, every single teacher in this district wants to do his best for kids. I have no doubt of that in my mind, but every single teacher in this district's been trained completely different than this. And, and, and we all know, like, there, I'm in charge of these students and if I fail them, I fail them. And so asking them to kind of turn some of that ownership over to kids is going to take time and there'll be some failures along the way. Um, but to get to something like that would be incredible. And I think that would be, that's how we then turn out those learners that just, they can go to anything. Because they, they know when they're, like, they know I've got the skills to get wherever I want to be. And that would be awesome.
We just, we just finished recruiting season, you know, for, for new grads from architecture and engineering. And, and we have a series of questions and we, we certainly want people to have good work ethic and have character. Who doesn't, right?
Right.
But are, we decided that our two most important things, uh, three actually, that are most important in our hiring. Besides, will they fit culturally?
Sure.
Is number one, curiosity. Number two, critical thinking. And number three, a willingness to not be comfortable with us.
And you're saying some things you're probably seeing on that graduate profile. I even, I looked through some of the things that our teachers have, like, those are things that come up. And I think that's what we hear in our society right now. So, how do we, how do we create that culture? I think school for all of us for a long time has been learn how to play the game. So, that's a different culture. I, I, you know, I, one of them's sitting in the room right now who co-taught me for a while. And we tried to push our students in that way and they don't respond because that's not how they've been taught to learn. Um, they've been taught to check the boxes. They've been taught to play the game. They've been taught to say, you tell me what I have to sit back to. So to really put that power in their hands, it's going to take some time. It's going to take some time.
But they'll all be prepared for it.
Oh, yeah. And I think all teachers will too because it gives them, they'll suddenly embrace their passion. And I think, you know, when you, when you have to, when you feel like you've got to teach the same thing all the time, every day. Teachers are experts in what they do. And so to give them that autonomy and say, students are now an active part of this process. Go, help support them, use the tools you have. I think while it may seem scary, like ultimately it gives them a lot of freedom.
Any other, uh, questions or comments?
Just a, I guess a quick one.
Sure.
So Mike was kind enough to sit down with me and kind of give me the, you know, personalized learning tutorial more or less. And I went and I explored it.
Put you on the path of personalized learning.
Yeah, yeah. It was personalized and now it's learner, learner-centered. Yeah, I guess that would make, uh, make sense for what, what it's preaching, but, um, I used it. I, I practiced it in my class and I tried and we're doing midterm now where it's a make your own midterm. And one of the things that I'm really struggling with now is, like, how do you evaluate them? So like, I'm going, okay, I'm going to create a rubric. Um, but I found that it's just, it's so much work, it's so time-consuming to do it well. And so I just, when I'm looking at something like this, like, I'm, I'm worried about resources. I think I, what I more or less want to know is, is, one, I'm either doing it wrong or badly. Or two, um, there is just this resource limitation that as a district we're going to face. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, oh, great, Mike, how, how, how do we, how do we navigate that? Because our staff, I know, are already spread pretty thin. Is there, is there a magic recipe to that?
Well, I think a two-fold answer, right? And one of it's, it's almost a cop-out, but it's not, but hugely untapped resources are students, right? And so like, when you're, when you're creating what your own midterm, like they need to create right alongside you, here's what the rubric for that's going to be, you know? So this is, these are my goals, here's all and I'll hit them. Um, but I think a piece, so that's one part of the answer. And so including students kind of opens up some of those resources so that it's not always so teacher-directed. And that's, but that's the model that we're all used to. Anybody that's teaching right now is so used to it all has to fall on me. So that's not a knock on you or saying you're doing it badly. What you wouldn't do in any other life because that's how we're learning, that's how we're taught to do it. But I think the other piece, and this speaks to kind of our PLC processes. I don't know that we have pushed as hard as we can to say what mastery, and this is, because why would we? We've never asked anybody to do it. But what does mastery actually look like? So when a student can come to me and they can explain what the theme of this novel is, or when they can write a, a really good topic sentence. What does that actually look like? And a topic sentence was probably the bad example because that's pretty come to dry. But we don't have those conversations. I think where we stop is, these are the expectations we have for our kids. And our staff then needs to push a little bit further. Now, we need to help them. It's not their fault. Like, nobody's asked the question. What does that then look like? So that when those different sorts of projects come in, whatever they may look like, I have this schema for, well, they're going to have to have this, 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 and this. To make sure that they meet that rigor that I'm looking for. They're going to have to include these sorts of things. Um, you can still give students like, you can create your own project, but it has to have these four things in it because that's how I'm going to grade you. Um, I think that, and again, not to go off too much on a tangent, but like when we started PLCs in this district and I think in a lot of schools still. There's a, a hugely kind of, in my mind misconception that, that it all has to look exactly the same. Um, and that's for data analysis, but that's for the adults. So I think what we have to talk about more is rubric development and talking about like, all right. And this is so easy for me to say because I'm an English teacher. So I realize like less, I guess, liberally-minded or humanitarian-minded people are going to struggle with this concept, but like, what does it look like? When a student's functioning at a level that I want them to look like? And how do I grade that on a rubric as opposed to just looking for these very specific things? And that's a place where I think we can use our numbers because you've got groups that can work on that together. I think I can do a better job of embedding that into our curriculum revision process. Like that's, as I was sitting there tonight with, with our team. Just knowing how much work we have to do, it is, it's daunting. We just kind of take it step at a time. Um, and I do think over time, a lot of this stuff becomes interrelated. One of the things right now that I think is hard about personalized learning is everything is so compartmentalized. Like my English lesson is here, my science lesson's here, my math is here. That's not how the world works. And so I think as we, as we start to think about that a little bit more, how do we bring some of those things that we want our students to know, be able to do together? Um, so that they don't have to live, and it's a lot of times just redundancy. Like think about physics and, and algebra, physics and calculus, right? There's so much redundancy in some of those, those fields. Why can't we work on some of those things together and then free up teachers' mental space and students' mental space to be able to do other things? It's not an easy answer. And some of it's a little bit of a cop-out, but I think there, there are ways to kind of get a little bit, make that a little bit easier than that, the evaluation part.
That's a one to you.
No, why?
To, as my teacher, I guess, focused question was, but then like from the student perspective, drawing on my brother's experience, he's in high school. He's choosing between, you know, taking classes that are going to count towards his GPA or taking, you know, classes that are going to build his, you know, sort of focus and interest. And then there's a, it almost feels like there's only one path because right now, at least the way Sycamore rewards students is still on that like GPA, that, you know, one, two, three, four kind of scale. Do you see that going away? Is that part of the plan?
Bring me back to that conversation sometime. I got a whole presentation on it, but, um, I don't know. I guess it's a short answer. I think in my, in my, again, personal opinion, like, I think sometimes we limit students to buy that system. You know, I, I've seen students, I've talked to students that won't take an art or music class because they need this weighted GPA, or they will take a study hall instead of a class they really want to take because it's going to hurt their GPA and drop their classroom. There's people that can speak to that much better than I can, but I think if we really want to empower students, we have to make sure every pathway for them is equally viable. And if we have barriers in the way, we have to talk about, are they there for a reason? And if they are, cool, let's leave them. But if not, then maybe we have to start looking and take this apart. I know exactly what you're talking about and it's sad because I do think we have a lot of students that don't take classes that have, one of the, I think, three things stuck with me for a long time. I think this was more from Cayman, but when we were doing some of our, our reviews. So many people want to go be engineers and they've done all the math, but they've never touched anything with their hands. You know why? Because those classes aren't weighted, but our math classes are. So all these kids go and they think they want to do these things, but they've never put that math into practice. That's, that's an adult problem. We could help our students do that better if we set our system up differently. So that's probably a conversation for another time and I've probably opened the Cayman worm tonight, but there you go. That's what I do, so.
I'll jump in there too and just add very quickly. Twenty years ago, I would have said, well, that's the, the college system that's kind of built to only reward GPA, class rank, things like that. When it comes to college admissions and, and grants and scholarships and things like that. Um, and maybe Julie, Julie could probably speak to this more, more than I can. I thought that system would never change. And I'm not telling you that there are all these massive changes in that system, but I'm but I'm seeing changes in college admissions and grants and scholarships where schools are rewarding, um, students who are involved in, in different activities. You can speak to that in an essay or in an interview. So, again, marathon, not a sprint. I don't, I don't know that I'm gonna see that in my career. Really where I'd like to see it go. But because some of those structural changes are happening at, at the college level, teen college level, I think that's gonna create some flexibility that we haven't had before. Um, and one of the challenges, if that's kind of scary, we're used to being told what to do. When we have a little bit of freedom, you know, that, that, it's almost a little unsettling. But that's part of the process to really kind of step back, okay, what do we really want our students to know and learn? Um, can we create those pathways so that they don't feel like they have to take the weighted accelerating classes all the time? Can we weave in some of those others? So, I would just add that one other component is that college admissions and grants and scholarship piece that I think we are starting to see some significant changes in over the last ten years maybe. So, uh, I think that will help us down the road. Not just us, but all schools.
Are there other areas where this is less readily applied? When you talked about kind of generating these rubrics and then understanding the definition of mastery and I can kind of, I can visualize in my head how that applies to more skills-based, um, activities, right? How do you apply this skill you learned? Addition, show me you can use it. Um, but how does that apply on the aspects of education that are still more ro, memorization? You know, and I think, you know, with the history and some of the science classes where you just need to know these facts, even though information's kind of being, you know, commoditized and we don't value, you don't need to value that in the job environment for a lot of applications, right? Because I can look up anything in ten seconds with, with this little doodad.
But you gotta know what to look up, right? You gotta know how to search. So, I think, one, again, I go back to like, you have all this stuff you have to memorize and know and it's how you then present that. But I also think it's, it's fair to say there's always gonna be a place for more traditional instruction. You can look at kind of impact of teaching direct instruction has high impact on student learning. So I think, I do think that it's not like this is an all or nothing game. It's, it's constantly looking, I think what it does is being cognizant of when can we make that decision to put the learner at the center? Give them that voice, give them that autonomy? And then what do I, as the teacher, need to kind of reel that back in a little bit? You know, and I think it, like, just looking at like a unit plan or, or like how you would start a lesson, a lot of that direct instruction is upfront. Or it is when you're acquiring those skills. You just have to know so that then you can leverage them into something you can do with them. So I don't think that'll ever purely go away. Uh, and, and some students are gonna thrive in a more traditional environment. And again, it's, it's a misnomer. I think it's learner-centered. We have to do what's best for them. And in some students, that's going to be a very traditional-looking environment. And I, I would, I, I would hate to rob that from them, uh, uh, just because we wanna do something different. We need to make sure that there's kind of pathways for both. Thank you for your time.
Phew, well, that's my report for tonight. I'm, I'm actually, thank you. Mike has been instrumental i- in that process. He's, although we've all been involved in it, uh, Mike truly let it out. He's facilitated it. He's the, is the main, one of the main contacts, Mr. Ryan, who's as well, the, uh, Institute for Personalized Learning. So, uh, we have two administrative meetings a month, ones that have been P L C, ones that have been kind of general added meeting. Um, I take care of the, the boring one. Mike, uh, leads the P L C where we do, we have done a lot of this work. So, uh, there's a reason he was talking to that instead of me. He's the expert in, in our district and doing a great job. So appreciate that.
Uh, next item then would be open discussion, issues, observations, questions. Which are agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session? Second? Moving seconded, roll call?
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Shado?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Motion heard.
All right, we're, uh, back in regular session. And, um, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as amended?
Agreed.
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Shado?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Motion heard.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.